Somebody called it out.
Okay, I'm here, okay. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order. Are we up and running?
We're up and running, okay. We're getting it going here for Monday, January 11th meeting. The first item we have is minutes, approval of the minutes we have before us, the minutes from Monday, December 7th. They have been passed out ahead of time and my, um...
December 7th?
Minor changes and all were supposed to have been reported to the town clerk. Do we have any, do I have a motion to accept? Let's start with that.
I move to accept the meetings from Monday, December 7th as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I've looked through these ahead of time and I think we're in good shape.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented then? That's unanimous. The next one is Tuesday, December 8th meeting. We have those before us as well. I know I reviewed them and I had a couple of changes and I see that they are incorporated, so I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous. We also have the minutes for the executive session that was held later in the day on December 8th. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
They were helpful to me.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
Well, I've, actually if he wasn't there then that is a change.
You're right.
No, it says, it says Jeffrey, oh.
Present.
Oh yeah, this, I'm sorry, this is executive, this is executive.
Yes.
Okay, so you were there.
Nevermind, I'm, I'm jumping ahead.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting as presented? Then that's unanimous. We now move to Tuesday, January 5th. This is when you were absent and it says you were absent.
Now I can be absent.
Move to accept as presented.
Move to accept.
So moved.
Second. You need a second.
Seconded.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? I know I remember reading and finding a couple of typos, but that was about it.
I mean, that's, I think the, just that the conversation was caught well, whether everything was exactly as said, I don't think it's pertinent at this point.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
You're good? No other comments? Discussion? All in favor of accepting? Yep, you can. And one abstention. The next item, we have some announcements. First of all, the next regular select, uh, meeting of the Rockport Select Board will be Monday, February, and that looks wrong, I'm sorry. I've got to look because I think, no it is. February 8th. For some reason I thought it was the 11th of February, but, um, the next regular Select Board meeting for Rockport will be Monday, February 8th, 7:00 PM here at the Opera House and it will be televised and streamed. Meeting announcements, first off, the Rockport Town Offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th in celebration of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. There will be a blood feud. This is part of the 125th anniversary celebration of the town of Rockport. It will be Thursday, February 25th, noon to 5:30 PM at the Rockport Masonic Center, that's at 361 Main Street. You are encouraged to go online and sign up for it. The idea is that, this is a challenge from Camden and Rockport. In a celebration of the 125 years that Rockport's been in existence, the goal is to ri- raise 125 pints of blood. The first town to get to 63, which is one half plus the half a pint, is the winner. Even if they collect more, but if we collect them sooner, we can win. So encourage everyone, please, if you can donate blood, please contact the Red Cross and sign up for February 25th at the Rockport Masonic Center. The Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee is meeting on Wednesdays, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM until further notice. It had been on the agenda that they were gonna be meeting here in the Opera House, a meeting room, but they have moved their meetings over to the Town Office in the Richardson Room for the near future. Now I gotta find the next one. Most of the meeting announcements are on the agenda for this evening, I'm only hitting the high points. On Wednesday, January 20th, 7:00 PM, the Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors will be holding a ma- meeting. This meeting will be hearing a report from their consult, engineering consultants, Seavion Mahar, regarding alternatives for municipal solid waste disposal post the PERC, Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, but post their closing, which will be March 31st, 2018. This is really a first in a series of meetings on this subject. We've all been sending our municipal trash to PERC where it is burned and anything left over then goes on to the landfill. Come Jan-, come April 1, 2018, the contracts for that disposal cease. It also means that the special rate that PERC is getting from Bangor Hydro and CMP goes out. They, those two companies have been halving to buy, by law, the electricity generated at over-market rates, stops after March 31st, 2018. We've gotta find a place to send all our municipal solid waste. This is gonna be one of the first of several reports regarding how we, as one of the communities in the Municipal Recovery Corporation, how we can do it. Right now, we are in a consortium of four towns, Appleton, Camden, Rockport, and Lincolnville. We all send it, we all take our trash over to the, and Hope, I'm sorry, Hope. Yes, not Hope, Ho- not Appleton, Hope, we've got Hope. Okay. But in any case, we send our municipal trash or we take it there and dispose of it, yellow bags. That then gets to PERC. That then gets to PERC where it is burned. That's all off the table because we're under contract right now, but that contract ceases March 31st, 2018. Next Wednesday, the 20th, we will be hearing a report. Public is invited to attend, really encourage people that wanna know what's going on to attend.
Just a quick, if I, we have a meeting coming up in March, don't we, with all those other towns? Would this be a, a reiteration of what's gonna come on that meeting? Or will we be getting better specific?
What we, right now are looking at March for is to hear from the MRC on what their work is with fiberite, they're in that joint... Joint process of trying to find another way of disposing of the municipal solid waste that they think will be better. That's step two. But I've also been told that that meeting may be moved up.
Oh, okay.
You know, um, and maybe the town manager will report on that later.
I was gonna, remember, it's, it's on the agenda, I was gonna recommend that you table that because we haven't decided on an exact date.
Okay. But we are looking at another one where all four town select boards will get together and the public is welcome for that too. Uh, upcoming workshops. We have a joint meeting again with the Camden Select Board tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM over at the Richardson Room at the Town Office. There will be light snacks available around 5:30 for those who would like to partake. Committee openings are all listed in the agenda for this evening. We really are looking for people to volunteer, to serve on any of the town committees and actually, even though the town committee may not have an opening listed, we instituted the idea of alternates being appointed to the committees so that we will always have a full staff or a full component. Moving to agenda changes, do we have some agenda changes for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move under new business, Item C, Committee Applications, and Item D, Ad Hoc Technology Committee Guidance, to right before public comments, in other words, right now.
There's a move?
Second.
Second. Um, we have a couple of people here and at least one of them needs to be, um, out by eight, by 7:30, so I've asked him to do that. All in favor of these changes? That is unanimous.
And Greg is not going to be able to make it.
He won't, okay. The first application we have is from Stephen Hand. Steve, would you come on up to the podium? We were provided with your, um, application. This is for the Technology Committee. I spoke to Stephen last week, I think it was.
Right.
Yeah. By phone and he's agreed to put in his application. He has quite an extensive, as you can see from his application, extensive knowledge in the technology-related world, so, um, we do have his application, I know that was provided ahead of time. Do we have any questions of Mr. Hand?
I don't know, you know, Steve. I was just kinda making, we don't have one for Ari yet, but he's here, Ari Mills here.
Yeah.
Still approved earlier.
Well...
I'm in, I'm impressed. I like that you've done technology stuff with governmental, state, local, that I think would really add for this committee going forward.
Yeah.
He's, he's one of them bigwigs.
I forgot about that.
He's got a wing this big.
No, I'm good, um, thanks for being willing to serve.
Absolutely.
Okay.
What do you think about Twitter?
It's one of the primary social media platforms.
There we go.
And you get more than 140 characters.
You?
10,000, yeah, they're, they're thinking about it.
Well, that's gonna change the whole thing. If you can't say it in 140 characters, what's the point of saying it?
Moving on.
Donald Trump manages to do it all the time. Look what it gets him into.
Okay, do we have a motion to appoint, Mr. Hand?
Uh, so moved.
We have a term.
We have a term.
Uh, this is an ad hoc committee.
Ever and ever, you're, you're conscripted.
Yeah, this is an ad hoc committee, so it's not really a term issue, it is a completion. And actually, um, we were gonna then ask, um, and I know you're gonna be leaving right away, we're gonna ask the Technology Committee to get together, discuss what they see as the goals, and then report back to us at our February 8th meeting and give us an idea of how you folks see this work progressing.
Oh, we do have that, that's Item D, we have that on the agenda immediately following.
Yes, I know. Well, yeah, but he, he's, he's gonna be...
I'm here for another 20 minutes.
Oh, okay, so, we have...
So are we gonna continue with the charade and lie that says this is a ad hoc that's only, that's gonna come to an end because the technology aspect of guiding the talent is an ongoing thing?
But we voted on it to be ad hoc. If they come back and say, you know, this is something that really ought to continue and continue, then we can readdress it.
Yeah, I think at some point...
Just call me Johnny Appleseed.
It'll be a standing committee before...
Start as an ad hoc committee and if it appears a group is working well towards something, then we can look and make it up.
We have a motion to appoint on the table. Further discussion? All in favor of Mr. Hand? Thank you, Steve.
Give him a hand.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll give him a, okay. Since Ari is here, Ari, why don't you step up and we'll take care of the rest of the Technology Committee all at once. Actually, there was gonna be a third one, Jason Hand indicated, Hay- Haynes indicated a desire but was unable to be here tonight, so, but we have Ari here. You've done a number of items for the town already, I believe.
I have, I've done some design work for the town.
Yeah.
And I've been involved in different ways. Uh, as far as technology goes, mostly I approach the technology side from the design side, so websites, um, applications and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So where they don't have a, they don't have a, a form, you missed your homework assignment.
Yeah.
Can you just like give you a brief synopsis of why you'd wanna serve on the committee? What things in your background you think would be helpful? On this committee, on the Technology Committee?
Sure, sure.
You can just say I begged you.
He, he begged me. But also, no, uh, I, I mean, I think the technology is obviously gonna be, gonna continue to be more and more important, especially as we tackle things municipally. And it's one of those places where it's very, very difficult to make smart choices and make streamlined choices when it comes to technology. And I think that having a design sense when you approach that actually makes a really big difference because the core of design, as I understand it, is all about, um, it's all about understanding what belongs and what doesn't belong and sort of the safest, the smartest, sleekest way to get to a solution, you know, it's all about problem solving. And I think that, you know, technology and design are so incredibly tangled up with each other in this day and age that it would be silly to have a Technology Committee without some design sense on it, you know? Because more than, you know, the hardware is part of it, but then how you deliver all of that is, is also an important part.
What's your background been in technology?
Um, in, well, I was the editor of Down East's website for a long period of time, so that was much more on the content side. And since then, I managed a number of other people's websites, including main media workshops in college. I was part of the committee that brought the, that helped bring the fiber in. So I, I worked with the IT Director and Jeff and Meg Weston to bring that all together. And since I've started my own company called Narrative, it's a design firm, a marketing company, and we do a lot of technology sort of design solution infrastructure for people, mostly on, in the form of websites, but, um, we work in a lot of different other ways.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I move to appoint Ari to the Technology Committee for a term to be determined.
Second.
No longer interested.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Another hand. What happened, what happened to Harry's application?
Oh, Jeff has it over here.
Oh, Jeff has it? Okay. Uh, we now have a, um, an application from Harry Podolsky? Oh. To serve on the Recreation Committee. Would you please step up here? Uh, we received your application tonight, it says, oh, avid sailor, we won't hold that against you. Our, our town manager is, and so we just sort of ignore that part, a climber, cyclist, hiker, naturalist, wow, okay.
And local. Born and raised, right?
Not born, but raised.
Raised right around there.
Oh, great. Okay, um, questions? Do we have any questions?
Personally, I think he'd be a fine, fine addition to any committee, but this is well suited for him and, um, having watched him for a year, he was the student rep to the school board. And, uh, so he knows just how silly these things can get. And yet, and yet.
He's still willing to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm super excited to have Harry on this committee. Great. He also works at the Y, at the Rockwall, at the Y, uh, the Island Institute, so I mean, he's, he's wealth of all-around knowledge.
Oh, good.
Oh, you work at the Island Institute as well?
I do.
Oh, okay. Have we crossed paths there? I think we might've.
Maybe. What's your name? Sorry.
Before Tracy had to leave, she spoke very favorably about the application as well and Harry was a classmate of my son's in high school, um, and went to my alma mater, so he gets a check box there, so.
Do we need to invoke the abstention rule here? I don't think so, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
We just did.
We did.
No.
No, we didn't.
That was Ari.
We actually do need a term for this one.
Yes.
Three years.
Three years, okay, so...
It's a three-year, yeah, that's right, 'cause this is regular and they're all starting out, this will be a three-year term.
Alright, so I move to appoint Harry Podolsky to the Recreation Committee for a term to expire at the end of June, 2018?
Yes.
A little more than three years, so we'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
Second.
Yes.
Yep.
Further discussion? None? All what?
I'm just watching.
All in favor? Alright. Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Thank all three of you very much, thank you very much.
Um, so let's go on to Point...
I'll be in touch, man.
Point D about the Ad Hoc Technology Committee Guidance. We really want the members to get together as soon as possible to lay out how they see, or you folks see, the, the committee progressing and report back, reporting back to us at our February meeting. It may sound like it's a short period, but if you during your discussion think that you need to see some monies put into the budget for next fiscal year, that would be the appropriate time because we will be discussing the budget immediately after our March Select Board meeting and the town manager needs to be able to present a total package to us in early March, so, hence the reason for that. If, if you see, you, you think that there's gonna be a need for some money to do it, but we don't wanna presuppose, I know we have distributed to at least John Veman a, our initial synopsis of what we were, we're looking at the Technology Committee accomplishing, but it's not all-inclusive, there is one caveat in there that we do not want technology to be used to reduce town staff at the je- at jeopardizing the interpersonal connection with the public. We wanna be able to continue the great service that our town staff does and provides to our citizens, so, you know, that's probably the, from my perspective, the overriding caveat, so.
Did we appoint Jeff as liaison to that committee?
Yes, we did.
And we don't happen to have a hard copy of that that we could give them?
I didn't bring it to...
John, John Veman has it.
I know John does.
I figured it'd be good for them to look over. If we're trying to get you to report back by next month.
And Ari hasn't. Okay.
It came once, once your application would have been done.
Yeah. I'll try to get it.
I've got one hard copy right here, I thought I had it and I just...
Oh, you do, okay.
Just for like brain candy, 'cause, you know.
Okay. You can give that to Ari then if you would please? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you and hearing great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I gotta get back to where we were in the agenda. I know, but I gotta, alright, here we go. Uh, next item is public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Does anyone wish to make public comment this evening? Hearing none, let's move right on to the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, um, yes, yes, okay. I see there's a, a large person has just entered the room here, so this seems that the appropriate time to bring up that we've tricked Travis into coming in here tonight in a, a change in what we're doing at the Police Department. The chief has, um, started a Officer of the Year program, which all the officers voted on. Who was the Officer of the Year for the, for the past year? You've been, you've been had. I, I commented that, how good of a detective is he if he can't figure this? So, um, I'll let the chief take over now, but we, it was kind of a plot to get Travis here, it was kept very, very secret.
And I promised to keep it short and it is difficult to have anything go on over there without somebody else knowing about it. So up until today, I think there was only two people other than myself that knew about it. But you know, as administrators, I'm gonna look at my notes, but as administrators, we sometimes forget to thank people for jobs well done. I mean, we do it the best we can when we remember it, but there's a multiple of other things going on. So, you know, at the beginning of the year, I think Travis will remember, I asked everybody for their input as to what they thought an Officer of the Year qualifications would be. And they come up with your standard things like integrity, honesty, you know, professionalism, good attitude and work ethic. You know, it's all well and good, so here we are, fast forwarding, you know, 11, 12 months later, and I asked all of them to vote based on that criteria, on who they think best fit. And they couldn't vote for themselves and, anyway, the, the long and the short of it is Travis received the majority of the votes and, you know, and I think there's a couple of the, the eight or nine things that, that fit him best, I think, is his compassion for the job is tremendous. I mean, he's, he's a, just a good, down-to-earth guy. And his, his want, I think, to improve the community through what he does, I think also is admirable. And I think, you know, a lot of other people should pay a great deal of attention to what he does. And, um, it's something I've been trying to do this year by, you know, thanking people more often for more things. 'Cause you do, you forget sometimes. So anyway, I'd already said that, you know, everybody had, had voted and, and I couldn't agree with their votes more and I do believe that, that Travis, I did pretty good, I didn't even have to put my cheaters on for that. But, so anyway, Travis, if you don't mind, you probably do, but, that's alright, you'll hate me for it later. So anyway, this is a plaque in recognition for your good work for the year of 2015, presented to Travis W. Ford, Patrol Officer of the Year, Rockport Police Department. And, uh, there you go. Well deserved.
Does it come with like paid days off and...
Uh, listen, there's a secret squirrel agreement that we've talked about that I'll talk to Travis about later. It was difficult trying to keep things on the down low, 'cause...
I didn't, I didn't have a clue.
Which makes me wonder.
Travis, you're...
Congratulations.
Really, congratulations on this.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
One of our very valued employees, I'm glad to see you got it.
15 years.
Yeah.
Almost as long as you.
15, working on 16 and hopefully, say, 35 or 40.
I hope so. We need to keep our good people.
And on that note, I'll let him sneak back to Appleton and walk out.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you.
So no streetlight discussion for you.
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
So now if we can continue with my manager's report, the Town Library relocation, it went amazingly smooth, thank you to all of the hard work, uh, all the hard work of all of the volunteers. The library director, Ben Blackman, and staff did an amazing job coordinating everything that had to be done that day. And, uh, the Public Works Crew put in a tremendous amount of work getting that place ready. So when it was all said and done, there were about 80 volunteers that worked for about three days, moving about 40 thou- roughly about 40,000 books, volumes, uh, pieces of information, moved them all into the, into the new library building. Additionally, you have a letter in your thing to thank Phi Home Designs on, for the work on the, they did on the renovations. Uh, the work they did on the renovations went above and beyond what their quoted price was in order to get us, get it in so that it looked, uh, it looked as good as it, as it possibly could do. There were some minor, some minor changes to the, to what they bid and what we actually needed done and they did those, all those things without a change order. So they, they did probably a third again more work. Or maybe half more work than, than we paid them for. So they, they deserve a thank you also. But in all, I mean, it, you know, many of you got, you were over there for the move. It was like a well-oiled machine, it was, there was a conveyor system of, of books going from one place to another place and moved in without any injury, without any problems, 'cause it, you know, you're moving 40,000 books and that's in I don't know how many boxes, hundreds and hundreds of boxes of books being loaded and unloaded and put back in place. So that, that, you know, all in all, it went very well. And it, it, you know, everything's in and it's, the, the rough edges are all smoothed over and it actually looks like they've been there for a while now. The one Lime Rock Street location is being drained and winterized, I don't know if that's a, happened yet?
Friday.
Friday? Friday? So we're draining the system, the water out of the system, but we're winterizing the heating system.
The furnace is radiant heated one section and it has water in it.
So we're.
So should, you know, with that water out, they don't have any freeze in it, so if they want to go back in and use the building for something or run the heat or need to, they don't have any freeze in the system, it won't freeze.
We, we, we can turn it back on, but the idea is to get it, to save as much money as we can, because, you know, we do have expenses that are, you know, continuing to mount up. So with all of the move and everything that happened, you know, the, the, the temporary building on, I'm assuming everybody, have you been in there yet? One of the, the things that, when you go in there, you can start to see that, that building is just over five thousand square feet, and we're using every square inch of that building. It's not like we're swimming in space so that we, you can go in there and you can say, well, see, we got a ton of room in this space. I mean, there are places that there are improvements, and there, there are places that needed improvement, but it, we still can use more space. One interesting point that I noticed is that there's artwork on the walls that I walked around, I said, wow, this, who donated all this artwork? And the comments were made that the artwork has been in the library all that time, and all the times I've been in the library, I never noticed it, because it was so cluttered and, and crammed into all kinds of little spaces that you never really noticed it. Now the artwork's more prominently displayed, it's not totally prominently displayed, but it's, there's some nice artwork in that, in that library, and when, when we're designing a new library is to make sure that you're paying attention to allowing space for art to be prominently displayed. So, on, on, kind of a note along with the library is the RFQs went out today for the request for qualifications for architects to present, make presentations for the design of a new library. Those went out, hit the paper, they'll hit the papers Wednesday of this week, and then also we sent out to a list of about, I'm guessing about twenty or twenty-five architectural firms, all of the ones that have, that, that replied to the last, was it Imagine the Possibilities? Was that?
Consider the Possibilities.
Consider the Possibilities. We had, I think, eight or nine reply to that, so all of them got a, an RFQ for this, and then all of the architectural firms in Maine that have done library renovation projects in the past ten years, we were able to get a list of that as well, so all of those firms also got a, a, a copy of the RFQ.
Are all of those firms within Maine?
No.
All those you sent out?
No. Some, it, it was one as far away as Connecticut, and one had offices all, all over the country. I think that was the one, can't remember which library it was, but, so that, that work is being done now, so.
You also put it up on like the MMA Works?
Yes, oh yeah, it's on, yeah, it's on those websites and our website as well. The Holiday on the Harbor event was a huge success again. One of the biggest reasons was, a lot of the reason is the, the weather was so great. Thank you, Ken. Isn't it nice you get all the credit when the weather's good? Because we give it to you bad when it's.
Going to the hiding form.
Right, yeah, exactly. But also, the, the hard work and dedication of the volunteers and the donations from the many local businesses, I'm surprised when they go through the list of all the businesses that make donations, how many businesses there are. And the many, the volunteers, when you see them all working, the students and all the people that work to pull this off, John Veman has like a, again, another well-oiled machine putting down, putting down the seventeen hundred or eighteen hundred luminaries that went around town, and it, it went probably a couple hours, two, two, two and a half hours to get all those luminaries out, and, and then a whole team of people went out and started lighting them. But keep in mind that this was all being done while the library move was going and it was happening as well, so there were people bringing trucks out of town, people running trucks into town, so all in all, there were probably a hundred volunteers working on that Saturday to do good things for the community. I don't know how many people were in attendance, I, cops usually are pretty good at, at estimating it and, and, what's his name out there? He estimated that it was about, about twelve to fifteen hundred people, probably maybe more, two thousand. It's hard to tell because people are parked all over town, wherever they can see the fireworks, so. One of the places that I noticed that it was really packed was up in Union Hall. The event at Union Hall has been picking up over the years, and so now the, the event at Union Hall was pretty crowded this time, which was nice to see, a lot of, a lot of people there. What, I, one person's commented that their, I think it was daughter, was playing violin with the group, the Bay Chamber Group, they had gone, a daughter or a son, they had gone to one of the events in Union Hall either last year or the year before and said they wanted to join that group and never played the violin before, and then.
The little kids.
Yeah, yeah.
They'd be great.
And, and joined the group, learned how to play specifically so they could participate in that, so. You know, we had a, a, a bunch of things going on, we had a, a follow-up meeting the other night to kind of, for the first time, sit down while everything was fresh in our minds to kind of go over what, what, what worked, what didn't work, what could we do better. Jeff did a bunch of filming, there was a bunch of filming going on, both through hard, just regular film and then through drones.
Jeff's drone.
I thought I saw that drone filming there.
Yeah.
That wanted to shoot that thing down.
Right. There was, there was a drone, plus there was also, Jeff was filming with regular stationary camera.
Yeah, well, there were three cameras going.
There were three cameras going, so we should have some really good footage of that. The one thing we do need to do is we do need to create a, a line in the budget that we can charge some of the stuff that we're, kind of the incidental stuff that we're, we're absorbing, and it's being absorbed in a bunch of different little budgets, and we need to, we'll, we'll have a line in this year's harbor budget that will be for Holiday on the Harbor. The, the piece of good news is that there was a change in the law having to do with fireworks that allowed, is it Class C fireworks?
Yeah, I, I haven't looked, but.
That's what we use as Class C fireworks? The, the change in the law that says Class, Class C fireworks no longer need a, a permit and a licensed pyrotechnic specialist to shoot them off, because they're, they're regularly, they're available to everybody. So that will save us about fifteen hundred dollars, which is an amount that we ended up absorbing this year because, because we had to, to make it happen, but we won't have to do that in future years. Jason was at a training and one of the fire marshals was there and, and remembered the problem we had and said that law had just been changed, so we, we'll be in better shape next year for that. But all in all, we, I mean, that, that event, between our event, the Camden event, and the Rockland event, for three weekends, people have a lot of different things that they can go and do, and each, each event has its own kind of flavor, and, you know, our event has its, the fireworks and the luminaries and the beauty of that stuff, and what, you know, the parade in Camden is really popular, and, you know, so there's a lot of things, we're adding a lot to the value of Mid Coast with our event here.
I don't want to take up too much time, but can you just briefly touch on what some of the suggested improvements for next year would be, just to get a sense of what they thought?
Oh, yeah. I had a, I had a list, and I, I can't remember all of them, but my, my list included, we need someone assigned to take this kind of, the, the sound system you hate, but the, that would work, that to, someone, that that's their job is to make sure that the sound, there's music playing down at the harbor, and something that, so we can make an announcements, you know, we can make an announcement, the fireworks are going to go off in ten more minutes, you know, whatever, so.
Which is as much for the guys in the boat than it is for.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. But also so that, so that there's music playing down there, this holiday music, because it's quiet down there, there's nothing.
You got a lot of people there too, if you have to make some kind of emergency.
Right. Another thing was that we want to involve the fire department and have a firefighter, having, having a, a water rescue team there, right on scene, rather than having.
That came up with the last event that we had, was the Bettina's, whatever we had talked about, some sort of water rescue.
Right, so to have a, a water rescue team on scene. Another, another thing was to close off the, the top of the road earlier on so people can't drive down there, because it becomes kind of a nightmare down there with all of the different vehicles moving around, it's dark, you know, it.
Maybe another officer as well, so you're only allowed to be in one house.
Right, yeah, another officer on duty to do that, and I can't remember some of the other things.
Perhaps getting somebody to volunteer with a neat vehicle to transport people with mobility issues down to the park too, if they can't drive.
Yeah, yeah, but the, actually, I think that the, the, the horse, horse-drawn carriage was very popular this year. Again, due, due to the weather, I think the horse-drawn, drawn carriage was very popular this year, although they complained that they, they didn't like the drone too much, but.
I thought I saw something that they wanted to make sure people took pictures of the luminaries.
Well, that was an after the fact.
Yeah.
That was a plea, do we have photographs? Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, oh, good.
Oh, you got, you took a lot of, a lot of aerial stuff flying through them, because they are pretty spectacular. So the winter storm update, the good news is we've had none to speak of, really, which is really good for our, our highway budget so far. I mean, I think the guys are chomping at their bit, they, they, they got their engines all revved up, but no place to go at this point.
Had the one storm, you know.
Yeah, it's, as I said in my notes, six inches and for us is just good traction, but, you know, we might have a little bit of snow this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Well, actually, you, they could have gone around and plowed some of the roads today and get all those branded limbs and branches off.
There's been a few, a few sanding and salting events, nothing major, but we're in good shape, but, you know, the, it's, it's given unlike last year where we went from the end of October till the end of March without really a break, and them not getting, getting, being able to do roadside cleanup, brush cleanup, all that stuff, they've actually been able to do a lot of work in ditches and roadside cleanup and brush work, they've even taken able to do the library stuff last. Yeah, no, no.
How did Park Street fare in that last? Good? Because it was, that's one of those trouble areas, it was flooding earlier in the year too.
So the Public Works, the new, new one-ton truck has been delivered, and that's gone into service. There've been some problems with some other trucks, but Public Works has been trying to keep ahead, ahead of them. The, you know, some of the things that you don't, we don't think about, the highway crews do is all the, the docks come out, all of the lights go up, all the lights come down, all that stuff, the highway guys do that. If it's, if it needs to get done, a lot of times it's the highway guys.
That's why it's called Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works, right. It's those, those are the guys that when, when you need stuff done, they get stuff done, and, you know, they complain about the way I decorate, but, but the lights came off, my, the trees that Jamie and I decorated a lot easier than that one tree done the other way.
When it's trained on, doesn't take long to get them on.
Yeah, right.
One for Mike.
So the fire, fire department, the chief has done a complete check of the town's numbering system, he's driven around to every house, by, down every street to make sure numbers, numbers on, are clearly visible on everybody's houses and mailboxes, and he's physically gone up to houses and knocked on the doors if the numbers aren't right, and given them a letter and explained to them, we need, if, if you need us to find you, you have to have a number out there. With a few exceptions, most people don't, aren't thinking about that, they don't think about it until they make the call, and then they real, you know, the ambulance drives right by the end of their street or their end of their, not the end of the street, but the end, the end of their driveway. So, you know, mo, in most cases, people are responding pretty positively, that took him a little bit of time to get through, but he's done that. As you, you heard, Travis is the Officer of the Year for, for Rockport, voted on by the other officers. We did lose Cooper Placeded to the state police, his, his last day was. Last Monday, yep. So we're, the applications are, we're accepting them now, and the deadline is the twenty-seventh, and we have also put the, the old Dodge Charger that we're getting rid of out to bid.
Going back to Travis's, will you be putting out a press release on?
I don't know, I think the, one of the presses right here.
Yeah.
Started taking pictures, sure.
But, yeah, yeah.
Might be good to get a picture of him in his uniform holding.
Yeah. Yep.
Wicked exciting.
You know he's done a good job when you can speak highly of someone who's given you a ticket. He's a good guy, I mean.
Doing a job.
I wasn't going to fight him on it.
The Opera House project, that, the project has, the painting and roofing portion and all the exterior stuff has been closed out. I don't know if you noticed today, they were putting up that last little piece, there's one little window that they had trouble finding a supplier for that, so that one window up in the, the archtop window will, they were templating it today, and so that should go up here soon. It's nothing major, it's, it is, but when you drive by, you see all these new, this nice glass on all these other windows, and there was one window missing, so they, we did finally work that out, so that's, that's been done, will be being done now. The, as you know, they're still working on the furnace downstairs, it is working, it is working, but the second phase of that will be to change out all the controls that are down there and run the HVAC, the, the air conditioning system, and that work will take place this spring, correct, Mike? And one of the things with the air conditioning system is that they've got to look at the, the air intake system, the air, cold air returns. There's been some questions about that and the controls that it control how much exterior air comes in and how much air gets recouled, so that will, that play, that work will be done, taking place this spring, and we, we're, we're working through that now. The infrastructure projects, the, the, those are expected to be going out the end of this month for bid, most of them will be the end of this month, the beginning of next month, so you'll start to see all of those projects going out to bid and for, for a spring-summer construction. The Mill Street Bridge project, it is a August construction, correct? Mill Street Bridge has to be done at low flow, the low-flow time, which is August, so everything else will be good to go. I think Summer Street, School Street are all, they've all been surveyed, all the engineering's been done. The challenging one is the High Sidewalk, that's the one that's going to be the challenge. Mike is working on with the, with CMP because of the, with the location of the poles, you know, unfortunately, the poles have, a lot of the poles have, some of the poles by the High Sidewalk have to get moved over to the other side of the road, and one of them is one CMP just blasted and drilled into the ledge just last summer. But in, in that part of the project, there are two trees that are going to have to come down on the easterly side of Pascal, so those will, they're, Mike and I went down and looked at them, I, as everybody knows, I hate cutting down trees, but there are trees that are, they're not going to be really noticeable, the place that they'll be really noticeable is for the people that live up on the hill, they will get their visibility of the harbor back, because we'll be removing, the trees, the, the, the crown of the tree is so high up that you don't really notice it driving by, where you'll notice it is if you live up on the, up on the hill, you'll be able to see the harbor again. The Rockport 125th Committee, that committee has been working very hard, pulling, pulling it, events together, the kickoff being Friday, February twenty-fifth, is it the twenty-fifth?
Is.
Is it Thursday, the twenty-fifth? Yeah. Yeah, Thursday, Thursday, twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Flood drives on that day.
Yeah, Thursday.
More events on on Friday and Saturday.
Saturday, right. At the Opera House and and then, uh, there was something that was changed today. It's going to be at the at the elementary school. So, that group has been working, they meet every week, uh, pretty diligently. They more they're more working every week. And from what I understand, their focus now is on the February event, getting that done. And then, once that is passes, because that's coming up very quickly, is to then switch gears and focus um, really hard on the July, August, the week of July and August. Getting that done. So, there's there's a lot of a lot of great events and a lot of things happening, so.
I'd add to that now. To add to that, um, we, the Select Board, have been challenged by Camden to a toboggan race. We're going to discuss it more later, but the committee has also done quite a bit of work on getting a costume for us, so.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Oh, really? But we can't discuss it. We can't discuss. We can't discuss what the costume is. It comes as a surprise. But I'm sure we'll discuss it more tomorrow night when they're when when we're meeting with them, you know. We can slap them with a wet fin or something like that.
I had two, uh, two questions. One was, I saw that they you had a bit of the mock-up of some potential materials for the high sidewalk at the town office. Didn't know if you had gotten good, bad, and different responses.
Not yet. We haven't publicly. I'd like to get Mike, Mike and I were talking about, get two more samples.
So, that was one piece?
That's just one piece. I'd like to. There's another one that's.
That's three sections.
I thought it was more than one section.
I actually think that's six, six blocks.
In the lobby of it.
They may make a different color, but I think we only make one other color. It's a rusty.
It didn't necessarily offend me.
Rusty looking.
We don't yet.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
So, that is six blocks.
Okay, but there are basically two colors and potentially have another supplier so that people could pick from. The what we were looking at, there were several different iterations of how to how to build the high sidewalk. And, uh, it's it's it is an engineering kind of challenge because we can't go further into the hill without a significant amount. We we have limited funds. And we can't go into the hill without a significant amount of work. I mean, so so there's a, we've got to move out closer to the edge of the road and so there's going to be a big wall. And the challenge is I'd rather not have it look like a, you know.
New Jersey Turnpike?
New Jersey Turnpike. Because it's one, it's a thing that everybody sees. Everybody will comment on.
And the other question was, do you have any updates on the borings for Memorial Park?
Uh, no, of getting those done?
Yeah, I just didn't know.
They haven't been done yet. Right, so they're they're scheduling that now.
Cool.
And the survey work.
Okay, great.
The survey and the survey work will include, some of the survey work has been done for previous jobs that that Gartley Endorsky has already done. One of the questions that we had was, do we want to have the survey, an actual survey of the town's whole right-of-way? Or do we want to just use the work that they've done, which just shows the edge of the pavement and the sidewalks that we currently have in place? And we opted for just on the on this side of the road and on the on the far side of Union Street to just go because with using the edge of the pavement at this point in time. To have them go back out and survey the actual right-of-way will have if if we end up getting to that point where we need to do a real, you know, real redesign, we'll have to have that survey done work done. But the for from an architect's perspective, they have enough information that they can they can start to sketch things in. If they decide we need to move a road or do something like that, then we then we will need to to do more survey work. But we can we can bridge that across that bridge when we get to it. The challenging places is right out in front of here, uh, but we have no place to go. So, the side edge of the pavement and the edge of the sidewalk is probably as far over this way as it possibly can go. So, you know, it seemed foolish to spend to spend twice as much money to get information, little a little piece of information that we're not sure if we're going to need it. We have enough to make a that an architect can make a good you know, they they can get a good, um, concept in.
Wouldn't the state have a survey of the road?
Of they may.
State road.
Yeah.
It's a state road, I.
Yeah.
They they have looked into this intersection before and it was laid out in like eighteen seventy-nine. There hasn't been a lot of surveys of this actual section of road that they know of.
Pretty current.
Yeah.
So, the I don't think the state actually has any more.
And and actually, there was some some problematic surveys. My former mother-in-law paid for a survey of Hughes Street. And that was a two-rod road, but it wasn't using up. It's it's the full extent of what we owned was not clear, so there are some some issues. When it when it comes down to counting inches and feet.
Yeah, the the older the property, the older the survey, you know, the technology is cut so that we can.
Well, down by that old oak that, you know, that was there in eighteen forty-two.
I would like to add one thing to the holiday on the harbor, that the Bay Chamber had a concert upstairs here. And it's a Rumba Coca, I think it was called, a Latin group, and boy, were they good.
Oh, were they?
Oh, they were young and they were dynamic and having a great time. You know, my my cousin from Unity came down, we went with together, and then he went down to the harbor. He's finally met a harbor master. He'd never been in a harbor master's building or met a harbor master before. So, he was quite pleased, so.
Well, he met the best one, then.
Well, yeah, yep. Um, anything further for the town manager?
No, but there's totally a Rockland joke in there somewhere.
Oh, I'm sure. Before we move on, we do have a proclamation to read and vote and approve. This is a resolution of the municipality of the town of Rockport by the Rockport Select Board titled Rockport Public Library Moving Ahead Volunteer Day. We, the Select Board, now assembled, most respectfully present as follows. Whereas, the Select Board for the town of Rockport recognizes the following volunteers and any others that gave many hours of time in different but equally important ways to ensure that the change of locations to the Rockport Public Library occurred practically flawless. And I have a list of names here. We would be here until eleven o'clock to read them all, but I will continue. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the town of Rockport, do hereby proclaim our appreciation of the volunteers and their commitment to the Rockport Public Library and Rockport Public Library Moving Ahead Volunteer Day. We thereby declare December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, Rockport Public Library Moving Ahead Volunteer Day. The permanent official day to honor those that made it possible. In testimony thereof, we have unto, we have hereunto, set our hands and caused to be affixed the great seal of the town of Rockport in the state of Maine this eleventh day of January twenty sixteen. Uh, this will be completed tomorrow and we will be looking for a appropriate way of displaying this with all the names listed down at the library. Um, I'm sure we can find a frame that is used to present two pieces of of paper somewhere and and do that with the great seal affixed to this.
Do you want to change that adjective to an adverb?
Which adverb?
Last thing you read on the first part of the.
I think it's written there correctly.
Oh, okay. Never mind, apparently.
I think you read a word that was different, but at any rate, the intent was there.
Okay. But we.
It being a library sort of thing.
Wouldn't you have a motion to vote on that?
Uh, I would entertain a motion to make this a permanent record of the town of Rockport.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Will town employees get the day off on this new holiday?
If they had taken it on December twenty-first, then.
It was one day.
Should have done December twenty-fifth. That's two birds with one stone.
Actually, I would like to make a comment because I helped that day a couple of different days through there. But what was striking for me was that I saw a lot of different people there volunteering and I saw people who were very passionate on both sides of the library issue. Whether they were, you know, very strongly for one side or very strongly against one side, everybody turned out to help. And I think that speaks very well for the town. We can have our differences, but when there's things that need to be done, everybody shows up to help.
That is, that is true. Quite an event, so. Uh, we have the motion on the board to make this reclamation a permanent record. All in favor? And Tracy also signed, though she cannot be here at the moment. Uh, so, uh, with that, we will have that prominently displayed at the earliest opportunity. Uh, the next item, we're going to go to unfinished business. Uh, the first item here is the comprehensive plan update. We had asked Jamie to check in with the state planning office and see what absolutely needed to be done and what we can skate on and things like that for the near term, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jamie Francamano from the Planning and Development Office. I'm wishing that I'd gone with my gut a month ago. I'm going to have the result of making a something a little bit more complicated than I should, which I've been gotten a lot of support on that kind of thing, but I also think it goes too far sometimes. So, the comp plan is current. What I learned from the state planning office is the only things that have changed have become more relaxed since I last checked in there. I worked in that office for a short time and got to know their process, so I'll just go over it very briefly. And if it sounds more complicated than it should, you will let me know. The state planning office was eliminated in two thousand twelve. So, since then, the trend has continued to limit their influence. The, uh, what's existing now is the municipal planning, uh, assistance program. It's two people still remaining in the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. They still do the job of reviewing comprehensive plans and making an opinion on its consistency with the Growth Management Act. And so, that's what you hear about. Is the plan consistent with the Growth Management Act?
Can you give me some frame of reference with the Growth Management Act? And I only say that because it seemed like you were saying that the people reviewing it were from forestry and more of kind of a natural world. What growth are we talking about? Am I making this complicated?
I racked my brain how to make it simple because I really want to work on my reputation in that regard. But the, uh, you know, planners come down with planner disease and these state planners, um, really do have a complicated setup. So, you're talking about the act that came out, um, when a, uh, a big box debate was raging in the state of Maine. And it was determined, uh, Maine in general is sort of primitive when it comes to regional planning. It was determined that if there's a big enough retail development, you've got to work with the towns around you to make a decision. So, um, that that part of the act was never implemented. There was a long, long process for how you could get a consultant and there were two or three firms who, you know, helped the committee that drafted it um, say what what expertise the firm should have. And they did some work forming opinions for various towns on various projects. But, uh, it was never used to actually challenge a proposed development. And what's left of the Growth Management Act is much more tame. It just says you should identify your growth areas and your rural areas. And a few details like that that are very generic. So, if you go through the municipal planning, uh, assistance program, former SPO rulemaking, uh, when they make a finding of consistency, there's a checklist. We passed with flying colors in two thousand four and the the guidance in a nutshell is if nothing's changed, you don't have to change. You're still consistent. The, uh, the actual finding, though, is good for twelve years. Used to be ten. Every time the governor and and the administration in general takes a look at this, it gets more relaxed. So, used to be ten, now it's twelve. And twelve years from the date of adoption will be this November the fourth. So, we will have a plan that is ready for a new finding of consistency. And the very minimum that you can do if you're going to submit to them is to update the data. So, for example, if it says in the comp plan as it does, seventy percent of our new housing starts should be in one of these residential villages, uh, the the five villages that are identified in the plan, including the downtown village. We could, uh, study that and figure out where we landed with our data. And then there's just, uh, there's a number of standardized data packets. I picked out things like that because they're customized in our comp plan. And so, we would want to put a burden on ourselves to to answer the question, how did we do over the last twelve years? So, that is the work that I will recommend in my budget, uh, for the coming year. Which is to get some help verifying the important points of data in the, um, comp plan. And we may use that for, uh, a refreshed finding of consistency. Now, I've just finished telling you, you don't have to do it. And so, I'll just go into that little bit of, uh, complexity and then pause for questions. You don't have to do it to be found consistent for the most important purpose of a comprehensive plan. The most important purpose of a comprehensive plan is to make a statement of the community's desires for growth. And in some cases, something other than growth. And the only time when push comes to shove and you find someone winning or losing an argument on the basis of the comprehensive plan is when a project is approved by the planning board or ZBA or a zoning amendment is adopted that somebody doesn't like and just argues it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So, if you take a look at what we're working on right now for zoning that could even be remotely controversial, it has to do with adding more development potential to the downtown Harbor Village area. So, uh, that's supported in spades in the comp plan, so we can't anticipate any trouble with that most important purpose of the comp plan. A secondary purpose is that grant programs ask you on occasion, do you have a comp plan that has been found consistent with the Growth Management Act? And this also, just like ten years turned into twelve for the stale date of a plan, this is getting weaker. When I last did a downtown revitalization grant award and implemented that grant in Presque Isle, we, uh, got three bonus points out of, well, three points out of a possible one hundred for having a plan that had been found consistent within the right number of years at that time. Uh, the CDBG program, uh, is today as it was then run through the Department of Economic and Community Development. Uh, at a recent training with those people, they told all of us planners, uh, and community development directors, they no longer are doing that, uh, you don't lose the points. What you do need is a finding that the actual project you're proposing is consistent. So, again, if you've decided to put in a whole bunch of granite curb and and crosswalks in a rural zoning district where nobody has to go anyplace, you may not get that finding of consistency. Uh, or if you've, it it so those are the issues. They're so they're much more focused, much more, uh, common sense based than they were in the past. The only group that has stepped up the relevance of comp plans in their grant review is the Municipal Planning Association Program, Municipal Planning Assistance Program, former SPO. So, no coincidence, everyone's taking influence away from them, but they've come up with a way to gain. But they've come up with a way to gain some, which is the grant programs they administer. Will require a fresh finding of consistency. And so, uh, that's relevant to us. We currently are administering an eleven thousand dollar, uh, grant from the Coastal Communities Program. To, uh, study the watershed. All of the towns matches, uh, in kind. But there are significant funds coming from the, uh, NOAA, the National Ocean Atmospheric Agency. Through the coastal zoning management program that they have into the main coastal programs, which is now administered by. The Municipal Planning Assistance Program. So, I found one thing we're working on that could be jeopardized. We might not be able to get another grant like we've gotten, uh, the past two rounds, uh, every other year. For, um, coastal zone management, um, activities. So, it, that's the only thing I could find that says this November is a problem. When our plan will be twelve years old. So, my recommendation is to work on the minimum for an update and I got the advice on what that is. That is where you started with your question and the answer is update the data. Report to them on every finding, uh, from the obvious one, like the census. To, uh, the, the highly customized ones, like goals that we set for ourselves in the two thousand four version. For, you know, how much density will be increased here and reduced over here. That sort of finding, um, is the bare minimum. Um, it doesn't necessarily involve, um, a new committee. They do wanna see a record of public participation, but these could be workshops hosted by the planning board, et cetera.
Okay. Um, so if we do this data refresh, Jamie, is that bias another twelve years?
A finding that the plan is consistent is needed. So, heaven forbid, the data comes back and says.
That's what I, that's what I mean, yeah.
We're way off of where we oughta be. Some, you know, one of our goals in two thousand four is not only not being met, but we're marching steadily in the wrong direction.
Right, but that, that's what I mean.
We're not gonna have that.
So, if, if they make the finding, if they, if we do the data and they, and they make a consistency finding that buys us another twelve years?
Correct.
Okay. Um, good in some ways, I guess, but then that means that the plan that was written in two thousand and four won't expire for twenty-four years and that's kind of a long time, so.
No, the, it, you, you get a new finding. It, they consider it a new comp plan.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the bulk of the written work will then last for twenty-four years, which is kind of a long time.
Well, the technology part could be beefed up, for example. You know, you don't find reference to, uh, a fiber network and that's relevant.
Well, that kind of falls to our discretion. He's telling us the bare minimum to get it approved.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out as a point of discussion.
I'm with you, I'm with you. Twenty-four years without, yeah, substantial revow.
And can you, let's say for the purpose of argument that we do the data thing, we submit it and we, uh, we get the consistency finding. We then, I would assume, have the ability to say in two or three years, to look at the thing more comprehensively, no pun intended. Say, we wanna, we wanna do a more complete overhaul of this thing and we could submit it again at that point. We don't necessarily have to wait.
That's right. Anytime is a good time to submit, uh, a new comp plan for consistency findings.
And you could also s- simply do the comp plan, plan for our own purposes. For our own planning purposes. I mean, the fact that the s-
Right, I mean, for my, for my purposes, that's the only reason to do it. I don't, I don't wanna do it just to punch lists, you know.
Just to, to satisfy the state, but to say, here's our plan for how we're gonna move forward.
Cause it is a useful tool. We've used it a lot.
It is, right.
The interplay with technology may be, um, nice kind of starting block, you know, a reference to the new committee and.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the difference is if, if, if all we do is change the data or the numbers and we don't, we don't need to convene.
Update the data, yeah.
A comprehensive plan committee and go through that process, is that correct?
That's right.
But if we do, if we do go in and make substantive changes to one section or another of the plan, then I would assume that we do need to, to convene a committee to do that.
The planning board can do it. They review your, uh, public participation more for quantity than quality, unfortunately. So, how many public hearings did you have and who attended? The fact that it may or may not have been hosted by a bona fide comp plan committee or by some existing board or committee is not significant. For example, and I've attended a couple of their hearings, the Camden Planning Board is going through chapter by chapter, having those conversations on their own. Um, charitably, attendance has been poor, but, uh, they are developing a record of public participation. So that they can update their plan accordingly. And the changes that they're making are not significant. They are what they consider cleanup changes.
Well, I know one of the. One of the things they did in Owen was, and then the tail end of that is they, they came to the pathways committee to help them write the chapter on. Pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in the town. And so I would presume that, you know, if we had our planning board do it, that they could pull in. Recreation committee or pathways committee and things like that and that would count as some sort of public participation.
And I would recommend the planning board, uh, nothing to be proud of, but the, uh, the volume of business is light. In these times, at the planning board. And they are the most familiar with, uh, the substance.
I kind of have a brief one. When you were talking about the, the coastal grants, the one that we currently have. It starts with NOAA and that's the federal end.
Yep.
And then it slowly does a percolation through the state and the state actually administers the funds.
Yep.
And I guess my question is, cause I'm not overly well versed with federal versus state versus independent organization grants, but. Do they almost always go like that? Or can you get a federal grant that's administered solely and exclusively through that federal agency? To where a comprehensive plan they don't necessarily care about?
Yes, you can. And an example, where a candidate still for, uh, a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. There's no, uh, state pass through for those funds.
But every time it passes through one or two of those offices as part of their checklist, it's the comp plan.
I, I have found that it's re- it's reducing. You know, the, the CDBG program is the most important to, uh, community development. It's called Community Development Block Grant. That money's from HUD. So, same story, federal money. Every year, however. The, uh, Department of Economic and Community Development in the state publishes a plan that says. Here's how much money we're putting into this hopper this year, so here's how many successful applicants there can be for that. And, uh, they're, they're losing funds dramatically and they're shifting them into, uh, priorities of, of the current administration. That happens every, you know, that's the way it works. The, uh, but that program in particular has relaxed the, the linkage to. The, uh, existence of a comp plan that has been found consistent with the Growth Management Act, so that it's project based. The, uh, they can ask the Maine, the Municipal Planning Assistance Program, it's so much better to call them SPO, but you just, that's not relevant anymore. Uh, you can, D E C D can ask M P A P for a finding. Um, these people have applied for downtown revitalization award. Is their proposed grant activity consistent with their comp plan? And M P A P will say it's uncertain if the comp plan has gone over twelve years since its approval. However, what the D E C D people are telling us in the training is that they're not even gonna ask. M P A P, who they're continually trying to marginalize, they're gonna make that finding on their own. So, if you're doing a downtown revitalization grant project. And downtown revitalization is a good thing in your comp plan, they can decipher themselves that it's consistent.
Thank you. Any other questions, Jamie?
I would point out to the board that the coastal management grant that Jamie talked about is the one that the Conservation Commission and Bob Kennedy is working on for water quality. And, uh, that money from that grant is paying for more equality equipment. So, that's one that we really wanna make sure that we can.
And that presentation that they gave, he pulled in some pretty serious experts that I think are volunteers, am I correct? I mean, I don't know how many people from, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, he just had his old friends have brought in. He's, he's putting together some good stuff.
The next round we'd be eligible for, you have to skip a round, is, uh, two thousand and seventeen program implemented. The fiscal year two thousand eighteen. So, we can, uh, hope to be done by then in, uh. Rewriting, a thorough rewrite of the comp plan and it won't affect the award we have now. But it is a sign that there's still some stakes, you know. You made the point, a comp plan is for the citizens of Rockport. But, uh, you know, the grant junkie cynic in me says, watch out for different audiences.
Okay.
Okay, that was complicated and I apologize.
No, good information. Thank you.
Yeah. And thanks for dumbing it down for me.
I don't know about that.
Okay, the next one we have is back to the request by the owners of Paws Dog Park. Um, we had left it last month, uh, asking for what the cost of the installation would be. And we have that information back. Um, one-time cost of three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents to trim section. And then there's the monthly lease price. It's, looks like this.
To the, to the second page.
Um, and then the monthly lease price, a seventy watt HPS radio wave for sixteen thirty-one. An anchor guy, apparently they're gonna have some guy out on the pole all the time. Yeah, seven fifty-nine a month.
He's pretty cheap, Jamie. Yeah.
You know, and then a sec- a section of secondary wire at five dollars and twelve cents a month.
Case the anchor guy falls.
Well, that's it. It's a secondary, it's a backup to the guy. Okay.
And, and that was per mon- I took that to be a one-time cost. That was per month?
No, that's, that's his monthly lease.
This is the one-time cost and this is the monthly cost.
The monthly lease comes out to be twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents a month or three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Times that by twelve, what did that end up to be a year?
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
It's monthly. That's the, that's the install.
I think that's what the confusion probably is, that three hundred and forty-seven dollars and six-
And sixteen cents is the annual charge for the rent, for the electricity and the other is the three, three oh seven is what it costs, costs to install it. Mike and I went down there today to look at the location of the, there's two poles that are possible, possibilities. One is that if you, if we put it on the, the one closer to Route One. It, it covers more of the parking lot area, so that when people are getting in and out of their cars, they'll be able to see better in, in, in that area. And will also give some light for the, uh, entrance and exit, but it'll be more for the parking lot. And that's where we were leaning towards putting that light is in that area, um, so that when people are getting in and out of their cars and, um. You know, we'll light that whole area, but it'll provide a little bit better light in the parking area. So, there's a, you know, there's a couple of options, cause neither light is, neither pole is in the perfect location, so, um.
Well, the request says to, on a light pole adjacent to the small dog park in hopes that will give us some light on the parking lot to be able to find our way.
Right.
To the main gate of the park.
Yep. So, that's where we'll be putting it up. I, 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 I was just kind of clarifying, cause I thought I, I might have alluded that it was gonna be on, close, closer to the entrance. And the pole is not in the best location for the entrance, either, either way.
Well, we want people to be able to see getting in and out of their cars, I think.
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly.
They're driving in, they can all have their headlights on.
Mm-hmm. Don't move around much, Owen. Yeah.
Well, I, uh, moved to approve the installation of a street light at the entrance of the Paws Dog Park on Camden Street with the cost as presented.
Second for discussion.
It moved and seconded. Uh, we will have some discussion.
Sure. So, what makes this different, if at all, from, you know, Mrs. Smith wanting a parking lot on, a light in front of her house?
Can we take a stab at it?
Oh, nope. Let's, Rick.
There, it, there's a public component to it, that it's, it's a, more of a public space. Uh, that it's, it's not just simply, you know, I wanna, uh, I wanna light in front of my house or have a light in front of my driveway. It's, there's, there's a public component where there's members, you know, people using, going in and out of the dog park. And there's a lot of people use that dog park.
Do they charge anything?
No, they take donations.
I didn't think they did.
No. So, that's, I think that's the difference, is there's a public component to it. And, you know, in many communities, many communities are providing this type of facility. We're lucky, um, that Paws does it. Or the, there's a group of people that are kind of parallel to Paws. Kind of sounded funny. But there's a group of people that, that specifically work on the dog park stuff.
And I think, excuse me, at our last meeting, I think it was Mike who brought up the thought that if we don't do this. Then people are gonna go where it's more well lit, like Harbor Park, and that's where the dog waste is gonna end up. So, we end up shifting things down there.
Oh, and that came up in the thing, the coastal land, what it's, the, the dog fecal waste matter pops up a lot in the tests that they take.
And, and the raccoon's smoking cigarettes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, a similar argument down the line, I'm just sort of playing this out a little bit. The, a similar argument down the line would be a business that had a lot of after, you know, after dark traffic. And they say, well, the public is using.
Mama's Boys?
The difference with Mama's Boys is I, I believe Mama's Boys, there are, there are streetlights in that stretch of the road. So, there was enough light on that stretch of the road. What she was trying to do was bring attention to her driveway, so that more people would see her driveway. I mean, as much as I liked Mama's Boys pizzas, it just seemed like there's a streetlight across the street. She was looking for, for a, a light that would bring people's eye to the driveway.
Well, it was a commercial venture and, and the other thing too is I don't, in that case, that particular case, I don't think the streetlight would have solved her issue. I think it would've been other things that would've solved it.
And so, the final question is, um. Where are we on the, um, the process of going through and enumerating the lights? Ground truth versus what CMP thinks. Do, have we opened up any budget money because all of a sudden?
Yes, we have. I think, I think the last time I heard it was a several thousand dollar savings.
And CMP buys, you know, quote, buys into that? I mean, they agree with that?
Yeah, they went around, uh, with the chief and they, they spent several days going around with the chief and, uh, looking at, uh, looking at the streetlights and I. I don't remember what the exact number was, but there were quite a few.
You reported it at two thousand dollars last month.
Yeah, it does amount to several thousand dollars.
Any retroactivity to that?
No.
Unfortunately.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, Owen?
My only complaint is about LEDs. And there's not, nothing we can do about it totally. My brother tried to give me the whole spiel about it when I complained. It's just, it seems like a silly way to do business. If you can be encouraging people to reduce if, maybe if they said. Look, if you buy these type, it's this amount, cause that's what you're drawing for wattage, but if you buy these type, you're drawing less. Electricity, we'll give it to you a reduced rate, but we don't have a choice in it, so.
If we want, if we were putting in our own service.
Yep.
To put our, oh, put another pole in to light the parking lot separately and we had our own meter on it. We could do, um, by speaking correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could put our own meter out in our own pole and provide our own lights. And then we could, you know, we could put LEDs in, cause, well, the harbor, the harbor, we have a separate meter in there and we have LED lights in there.
And we pay CMP every month what we've used.
We only pay for what we use.
Except the downside of that is you also have a service fee for the billing, so that overwhelms. I mean, that's gonna be forty dollars for the meter. Regardless, you know, before, before jewel one. Um, or kilowatt one.
So, it doesn't make any sense unless you got a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Harvard Park works out because you have.
If we could put a meter and then string lights down the road, that would make sense then, but.
And until, until CMP decides to switch over all the streetlights to LEDs, now I remember they. CMP and Public Service in New Hampshire went through a period of changeover to more efficient lights, oh, fifteen or twenty years ago. And we, we probably did that here. So, they had an incentive.
Which resulted in sodium vapor.
You're right, so, right. So, they, they, there was an incentive program to get people, to get communities to switch over and reduce the power consumption. So, and when they, when they start to do that, when CMP starts to do that, then it would make sense.
That, that was my only complaint. I wish we could, but I understand why, yeah.
I, I agree with you too.
Further discussion? Uh, I'll call for the board. All in favor of the motion to prove? Uh, call for the vote, all in favor of the motion to approve, there we go.
Do we know when it'll be done?
Rick?
Rick, do you know when it'll be done?
On a sort of associated line of thought here, where do we stand on replacing the streetlight at the, at the far end of the Pascal Street Bridge?
The bridge?
The one that got knocked down on the ice storm?
We've not been able to come up with a pole that's close to-
Oh, okay, I thought Steve had a pole.
One of those poured concrete ones, cause that's what that is, isn't it?
So, so the next step will be talking about, do we want something odd, or do we wanna put something, two, something new on that bridge?
Okay. And the other question is, how do we stand on, uh, the po- Chief of Police had a list of like fourteen or seventeen burned-out streetlights?
Yeah, he went through that list and I think they've been picking away at those, I don't know how many they've gotten replaced.
Cause I, the last time I looked, and that was last week, the one at this end of the Pascal Street Bridge was still burned out.
Oh, at both ends of the Pascal?
Well, the far end, it got knocked over, it ain't there, but the one at this end, which I'm sure they're still charging us
Oh, yeah.
For the far end that isn't even there.
Yeah, they don't know how to not charge us.
So, those were just related questions on that.
Being sent is a request being sent?
Right.
They, they have requested to come service.
As opposed to sending them the ball and saying-
But then, as far as I know, that, that, those requests were done-
Two months ago, three months ago. Okay, um, so, we've got that out of the way, no public hearing under new business. We have received a gift of two hundred dollars for general assistance for heating. Uh, the donor would like to remain anonymous, but, uh, it would be good if we could at least acknowledge the fact that we are very appreciative of these assistance that certain individuals do provide to the town for assistance for heating, assistance for a number of various things over the course of the year. And it really does add up and help, uh, with the budget and with providing the assistance needed to some of these people, so. But Stacy says that she has sent a thank you note to them. Uh, the no committee resignations, we've already dealt with the applications and the committee, and the guidance to the Technology Committee. Uh, the next item is discussion regarding a request for proposal or qualification for town legal counsel. Town manager has provided us a draft of the RFP.
Which, it's basically the RFP that, that you did the last time. And I would suggest that you not spend a lot of time on it at this meeting, just take it and, and review it and come back and set up. The important thing is to set up a date to, to work on the RFP, um, in a, in a workshop. And get it done so that we can, uh, it, if we had it, uh, that we, the RFP out to firms by the first of May, we could make selections in June so that we'd be ready to appoint somebody the first of July.
Maybe I completely spaced it, what happened to our town council?
Oh, nothing.
Well, the, the long-term, uh, the long-term gentleman retired and now we have an interim and everybody knows that part of the game is that they apply for the longer term. So, we, we have council, her name is-
Amy Chao.
And, you know, she picked right up where Bill left off. But, um, uh, it, it gave us a convenient opportunity to look at the whole thing again, look at the big picture again.
And the, the selection of the town council is a select board choice.
Right.
Not, not the manager's choice, which is a significant difference from this RFP.
Yes.
So that's why we-
Cause at that point, at that point in time, it was probably before the charter.
Yes. So it's our responsibility to, to go out and do this.
I just passed out the calendar, um, which goes through April. If we wanna look in picking in, a date now, um, I think I have everybody's anticipated absences, but I'm betting I missed something for Ken.
Well, that week of, uh, the first week in March, you have, you have me out all days but Thursday, but I won't be here Thursday either.
Oh. Yeah, I don't know why I didn't get in.
Maybe, maybe it got pushed out because there was more stuff or something. And then in general, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm out of towns in the afternoons through the end of April, so any, any meeting before six, I'm not gonna be able to make.
I mean, I would suggest sometime in early April.
Oh, you're right. Yep, yeah, it, it's the sixth. Okay, um, well, to meet your timeframe, Rick, when would you suggest?
Sometime, sometime in early April, oh, eh, cause you-
Early April?
Early April, late March, early April.
Okay.
Cause it, once we get past, um, the votes, or, you know, last week, March, nope, you got a fiber light, right? I mean, you, the, the month of March and February are, you guys are busy.
Yeah.
So either, um-
April fourth?
Yeah.
For me, I mean, let's pencil it in.
Okay.
April four, what time?
Do we wanna, well, Legacy, right now Legacy Rockport may have a meeting there, but they're shifting theirs all over the place, so I don't know exactly for sure when they are meeting.
What do you mean they're shifting, they only shifted one, they just-
Yeah, but then, but they would, were, would've had one last Monday.
Yeah, but that was cause of holidays.
Yeah, and they skipped that one, so they're now meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Right.
And then, their next meeting would've been on President's Day, and so I think they've pushed that one back a week, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think they discussed it.
Yeah, I don't think they really discussed it yet.
How long do they typically meet for?
An hour, usually.
So can we say five o'clock and then adjust as needed? It's April, it's a couple of months out, so.
Well, we can always ask at the, uh, the twenty-second when they, no, the twenty-fifth when they next meet.
Yeah, they, their, their meetings are pretty much an hour, the most.
While we have the calendar out, is, are the budget dates on here correct in March?
No, no, that, they are not.
Okay.
They are a week early, they got pushed back, all the green stuff got pushed back a week and I didn't get this updated.
Which ways back?
Uh, later.
I think that's where they were originally, I know when I originally wrote that weekend that I was gonna be away, there weren't any budget meetings that week, but, okay.
Okay. And what day do we say that was? Uh, April four.
Time to be determined based on Legacy Rockport.
Well, for now, for five PM, but it may move up an hour. All right. Homework assignment.
Read it over?
Read it.
Get the red pens out.
Read and weep.
Okay, now I gotta find my agenda again. Where was I? All right, the next item, oh, and here we go, the toboggan challenge. As you remember, our last, at the last meeting that we had with the Camden Select Board, they challenged us to a toboggan race. We're gonna discuss it more tomorrow night, but we do need to figure out who we're gonna have on the toboggan. Tom Cox has agreed to give us-
I'll be there.
Has agreed to, you know, lend, lend us a-
Super fast.
Yep, and he's super fast, he's skidded, you know, ironed, you, you name it, and, um, I also know one, at least one of the judges who judge, you, the-
Open for Brock?
Well, it's inspect, I'm sorry, inspector, uh, who inspects the boards, uh, make sure that they meet the requirements. And I'm sure I can get him to drag a knife or something down the-
That is Tom Cox.
Oh, yeah, well, Bob Anis does too, and Bob is even nicer guy.
So the fix is in.
The fix is in. Okay. Yep, yep, and, and we're very happy to have you here tonight.
So this, and, and one of the questions is, this is a cold dependent but not snow dependent activity.
The pond, the pond has to be frozen.
I've heard people out there, ice, have been out there ice fishing.
If the, if the pond's not frozen over, it'll be a problem.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Ken, why did the Coast Guard decide to pull out?
The Coast Guard, um, the Coast Guard's a funny group sometimes, they, you get different, um, between the different cutters and station. You get, um, people that are community-minded in terms of the leaders, um, at the, at the various units. And, um, community-minded in terms of, you know, getting out there and doing certain things and, and, um, um, sometimes their idea, what they wanna get involved in the community is not what is legacy. And so, this year and last year, it's kind of been waning and we've not been able to establish a solid foundation of people that wanna get involved. You know, the Coast Guard dates back to the, you know, early, early years of rebuilding that shoot. So, um, we don't have a group of people, we don't even have, we didn't, we had one person last year, um, that was wanting to, to help with the safety part of it. So, we'd love to have them back because we do have that legacy, um, relationship with them, but, um, it's okay, we've got, there's a solid, there's a solid group of, of people, uh, at the mountain this year in terms of the stewards and, um, the patrol, we're just gonna pick up the, pick up where they left off, so it'll be okay.
Mm-hmm.
But helmets are recommended, strongly recommended.
Cuts down on your aerodynamic properties.
Well, you can't get one of those that's shaped like a-
Kind of, like, does a bike helmet work? Does a bike helmet work?
Yeah, um, air ski helmets, I mean, you can wear helmets if it's, if it's snowballed, so.
Get one with big horns on it.
Yeah, well- But we will have to come up with a team name and get appropriately dressed.
Where do you put the light guy, the lightweight guy, is he in?
The heaviest guy goes in the thing.
I think the heaviest guy goes in the rear because he's on the downhill longer.
And the lightest guy in the front, so that, that sort of rises, you know-
Less weighted surface.
My understanding is that you, that you guys will be running in along the beginning of the four-person heat, so it'll be right around one o'clock.
Yeah, they, they said-
Don't we wanna be the first one?
They, yeah, Camden was saying, the Camden Select Board was saying that they, they have a good connection and they could probably get us, you know, both teams at the very beginning to start it off and-
See the clowns!
See those idiots on-
So all the checks are signed before injuries?
Yeah, and then, and then have it be beat almost immediately.
But this is just a challenge between the two of us. Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Wait, for Camden versus Rockport?
A broken stave?
A picture of a broken bridge. Okay.
So, I'm on, who else is on?
Sure.
Yeah, there we go, there we go, there we go.
I don't know if Tracy wants to be on or not.
So the army guy doesn't wanna get, that's cool.
I'd be, I'd be glad, you know, we have to, we have to give an opportunity because we are not, you know, discriminatory.
I think Tracy said something to the effect of, I don't want to do it.
I, I recall that.
I do, I do too, but-
Then I'm on.
So, we've got four.
Mm-hmm, we've got our four, and we can talk about team name and all of that sort of thing.
Kevlar?
I better make a note, need a helmet.
Flexerol, whiskey, helmet, you're set.
I wonder if the chief would give us Kevlar vests, just to protect ourselves.
You know, for when Camden starts shooting.
Maybe he'll give us tasers and we can get them on the way down.
Let's get going here. Uh, the next item is the pedestrian crossing at Commercial and West Streets, that's Route one and ninety.
Hit me up, Mike.
That, um, I understand this has gotten a lot more con- complicated than just putting a couple of
It has.
Four by four, three by three.
They don't consider a look at anything without engineering at first, for one. So it would need to be engineered. The, the, good part is it's scheduled for September of this year, so the very end of the summer, early fall is when it's scheduled to be done. So we do the light.
Okay.
That's, where did you-
Seventeen and ninety.
That's the earliest, right? Who'd you get that from, that information? You just called up MDOT people?
Yes, I called the person in charge of these two lights, seventeen and ninety and ninety and one, and she sent me all the specs, drawings.
Cause I know the Pathways people would be interested to hear, and so you said September of twenty sixteen?
Yes, that's, that's when it's scheduled, but they also were gonna put a culvert in last summer on Pascal that I'm still waiting for, so, just how they- So we do have time to look into it. I have called this person back and I'm waiting for them to get back to me. I would like to have one of the traffic engineers come down and meet with me and tell me where the, you know, where they would be happy with a sidewalk and consider it. Bill Napower head-started this at one point and never, I don't know where it ended up, I know it got started, but, um, so. At the moment, I'm waiting to hear back to see if we can get an engineer and meet with them and see.
Are they also considering redesign of the intersection?
At this point-
Turn lanes and stuff like that?
I actually have not looked to see if the lanes are gonna change, I doubt that that will change, but I will look, I do have some drawings. Blowing them up enough to see if they, if the actual turning lanes have changed.
Well, from my point of view, I think we need to push ahead with this. Uh, it's our opportunity to do it because they won't redo that light again for who knows how long.
Years.
And it's been a goal, a long-time goal of the Pathways Committee to, to get pedestrian access out toward the schools and things like that, so. I, I think for budget purposes, we really need to get the numbers in the budget to get at least the minimal landing path. We don't have to construct a sidewalk all the way out to West Rockport, but, but to get those pedestrian crossings in there, I think is important.
We need to get the engineering done and, um, the, the hardest part is gonna be doing, getting the engineering done, right, Mike?
Yeah, and that's, that's not gonna be hard, we just need to see, you know, get an idea of where it's gonna be, where they would want the sidewalk. I don't think, you know, coming up West Street from the old school to finish that sidewalk, for us, I don't think is gonna be a big deal. To get the sidewalk up to Route ninety, it would just be, uh, Route one there. And then, you know, enough that they would be happy with, for a landing on the opposite side, wherever they choose to put that, so. I think we do need to keep working on getting that across there.
Wasn't our intent to have landings on the far side, let's call it, of Route one, on both-
I'm sixty seconds behind.
As well as on the school corner.
Right.
No, I'd look into all four, quite honestly, because it's our chance to do it. If it turns out that the engineering says that the one by the, the whiner there is, or, or any one of them isn't, isn't doable, or it's gonna cost a lot more money, then we can make that decision at that point. But, why not, why not look into all four corners?
You wind up doing all four corners, but there might only be three crossings, that's the kind of advice you would get. Where's the, where, which is one of the crossings of one, I think uphill is probably less advisable than the downhill one, because of visibility.
Yeah.
You know, the, I reached out to the engineer I worked with on the intersection of Route one and one forty-one in Belfast. And I planned to put a cost estimate in, in, in my budget request, but only, you know, if it's useful to overlap with Mike, and Mike and I have talked about how that'll go.
Okay. Now, would this be something that Gartley and Dorsky could do under their current contract with us?
I think probably the state engineers. I think maybe the state engineers would do that, I mean, I would suspect we would have to pay them, but I've-
Well, I remember when we redesigned that intersection at Pascal in Route one, there was, you know, oh, you need to do it this way, and there was back and forth. And I think had to be redrawn a couple of times, I don't know if it was done by-
I'll, I'll find out if they would work with some-
Steve will remember.
Yep.
Steve will give you the whole history.
Yes, he will.
There are a couple of firms that are in and out of MDOT every day, all day, and, and if you, if you don't get what you need from MDOT's own engineers, you really want a, a third party that specializes in MDOT.
Okay. But we need to, need to do it probably sooner rather than, but if we have to wait for the budget, then that's-
We, we, we are gonna have to wait for the budget.
But we need, but we need to know what that budget number's gonna be.
Know what the budget numbers are gonna be, so that we can have a number in the budget, yeah.
There's all, there's also a good chance they won't get to it this year, but at least we'll have the engineering-
Exactly, we'll get it in the budget, um, there's al- there's also a good chance they won't get to it this year, but at least we'll have the engineering done.
Well, even so, we can encumber it for, for a subsequent.
Well, we should do the engineering.
Anyway.
Either way, I think we should get the engineering done.
That would help us if they didn't do it, that would give us a little more time to get.
Right.
Right, but we don't want to be in the position of saying, okay, we're gonna do it now, and then we're not, we're caught, not ready.
And we have nothing done, right.
Yeah, because we really have to take advantage of this opportunity.
Yeah, and I just want to say on behalf of the Pathways Committee, thank you, everyone who's been involved in, in keeping this going forward, because I know it will tickle them to find out that you all are taking it seriously, because it's a big hurdle there, so, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, let's set a date for the next fiber meeting. We have been letting this drift, and we need to move.
This one is one we need to get, get on.
Mm-hmm. If you notice on the
And let's.
calendar, oh, yeah?
Please not on a Friday afternoon again.
Nope.
My brain shut down.
I have suggested three get dates, if you've looked, if you look at the calendar, I just handed out. Um, one would be next Tuesday, uh, the nineteenth, night Jamie, um, that because Ken is out of town, we would not be able to start until six or seven in the evening. Uh, we could also do the twenty-fifth, we had originally scheduled that to be the meeting with the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee, but, um, they, we don't need that for that purpose, that would be at four P M, or the following Monday, um, February first, and again at four P M.
Well, the twenty-fifth, we already had sort of penciled in for a meeting.
Yeah, now the thing is, Owen is not here that week, correct? You're still going to school, right?
I am, I, in theory, could be, oh, is it gonna be at the town office?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's a workshop, you could Skype.
Okay.
We could Skype, we could Skype Skype you, right?
When you guys did your initial budget stuff, I was at the airport.
Yeah.
Just listening in and texting with Bill, and it worked out great, so don't, don't let me be out of town if that date works for other people, I can just try to watch it.
Well, do we want to look at, the earliest one was the nineteenth, and would, is that good for people? We would start at seven because you're out?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, generally on those Tuesdays and Thursdays, get back into town about six or so.
Or you beat it.
Having not had any dinner.
But you won't have had a dinner. Is there any reason for delaying it to get better information from Tilson?
No.
We've got everything, so we could have it tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, and you've got something in the packet here.
Yeah, I read over that, yeah.
Key business model questions came with it.
We, we.
Well, I, I think we should get back to it, so I'd say Tuesday the nineteenth at seven.
Tuesday the nineteenth.
And I'll, I'll eat dinner along with you, so you're not feeling alone.
Okay, well.
Matter of fact, I'll eat your dinner, no.
Well, if it's seven, I'd probably have a chance to get home and eat.
Or you could do it at six and we could just provide.
Yeah, I mean, how long do we think we're gonna talk? Couple hours?
Probably, but you, you really should, you know, it would be better, I would recommend doing it, you know, starting at six and getting, you know, I'll get pizza or something and.
The only problem with six for me is if, if there's any road issues or whatever, I'm gonna be late, but that, I mean, I guess that's okay. I can text you, let you know where I am.
Were you up to Maine Maritime that week?
Well, every Tuesday and Thursday until the end of April.
Okay.
So if we did, uh, Tuesday the nineteenth at six and we'll get dinner?
Okay.
Do we have any homework between then and now?
Review that and, yeah.
Do notes on it?
Wasn't.
There's a lot in here.
Wasn't, uh.
Only one double sided page to that man.
I thought that, uh, Tilson, Tilson was gonna get back to us with something after our last meeting.
Yeah, and everybody lost their notes.
General numbers from G W Y or something. Do we have any numbers to play with? Do we have any numbers?
Just what they had in their original.
Yeah, just what they had with their original.
So we're having the same discussion again, basically.
Basically.
Mm-hmm, it's unfortunate.
Yep. What will, what will it take to get numbers?
Um, to, how, what, I'm sorry.
We were, I thought that we were talking about, generally speaking, what's a feasible and not feasible kind of lowest number to start with, so then when we figure out, generally speaking, what we think the take rate can be, we take that number times by the take rate, that's our monthly revenue, which helps us figure out.
We already have those numbers, I believe, in the study that's been done.
Oh.
So the, the.
There's a projected take rate.
I think what we were talking about, we were gonna look at, Block Island had done something, we think we were gonna get some data about that and, and.
What the heck were we trying to get better numbers on last time?
Okay, so let, hold on, okay, then, thank you.
Um, that they had, they had gone through that procedure, I think.
Thank you. I can, I'm driving myself into, so it's, it's J- January nineteenth?
Yes.
Yep.
At six P M.
With pizza.
That was piece, a piece of it.
But I can't remember any of the other pieces.
But the, we were looking for numbers from Block Island for, uh, what their estimates were.
Yeah, I think for what they've got bids for, and I, I don't remember.
Well, they had just gone into a vote, hadn't they? Uh, like where their vote was coming up.
Yeah, something like that, and I, I.
We wanted to learn lessons learned from them.
Yeah, I don't remember the details.
Okay, that's a big piece, though.
Mm-hmm.
I can, I can get that information for that meeting.
And also the, well, the idea of, of scheduling it or laying it out across period of time based on like Islesborough is doing.
Yes.
We had discussed that at some point.
Right.
Your approval to do the engineering and approval to do the bid, you know, stuff like that, that, they didn't have one vote to do the whole thing all at once, so.
So when we get dark fiber in town, is Penn Bay Pilot gonna finally come on down from Camden to Rockport, start renting out here?
We're looking for space right now.
Ooh. Huh, convenient.
Let us know where.
How much you need?
Couple hundred feet.
There are a bunch of us that are, might be pooling together and not to know.
Okay, we should talk. We're friendly?
Yeah.
We're business friendly.
Yep, and actually, we may have a couple places up our sleeves.
Man, who would have thunk that just spitting something out? There we go.
Okay, uh, let's move ahead. The next thing, and I'm gonna ask the table this, this is to set a date for a joint meeting of the uh, Select Board, Boards of Selectment for Camden, Hope, Lincolnville, and Rockport, to hear from Municipal Review Committee, um, and Management of Fiber Right regarding their joint venture. I'd sort of pick the date of March twenty-ninth, so we'd have something on the calendar. I communicated it to Jim Guerra so that he'd make sure that their people could be there, you know, M R C people, uh, Greg Louder and somebody from Fiber Right, just to get it on their calendar. And I have now heard that they may want to move it up even earlier. Um, as I said in the announcements, we've got that big meeting coming up on the twentieth, which everybody can attend if they would like. Um, and I had been told that they might want to come in as early as the next Wednesday.
Yeah, there was some discussion at the last meeting that, and we're trying to form, formalize a date.
Okay.
So.
It would be good if it could be held here and, and streamed, so that we've got the permanent record, so when other people come in and say, oh, I've heard about this, that's where you go to listen to it, so.
And they can do the same at Camden, don't they?
Hmm, well, they kind of, they can't, it's, it's not as, uh, flexible a system, plus it's on, uh, they have a system where you have to let the provider know ahead of time, and it, it doesn't have the flexibility on start and stop at times. So it, ours is easy because we can, we can start streaming with no warning and stop when we want to. I mean, it's not, it's not a big issue, you just let, let them know, and I don't know if it affects the cost of the monthly service, they might project out X amount of meetings per, per month, but, um, if you, if you miss the closing time, then it just arbitrarily cuts off.
Oh, really?
Here, we start and stop on our own.
Oh.
So, okay.
Okay, uh, the next one, update on the potential Camden-Rockport Rec Committee, and I've put that on the agenda because last month you said there was some confusion.
There was some confusion, um, I talked to Martin today. I think one of the bigger things is he feels that it may be a hurdle for them politically to separate their parks and rec, which does kind of null out a joint committee. He's still gonna work it, he thinks that it's completely feasible, but it just may be a little more difficult than they thought, which is weird because we had kind of talked about it and thought we got to a good place, but, um, Martin's still working, uh, a lot in Camden as far as the Rockport side, um, so Mr. Jones wants to resign. Oh, dang it, another member, and I wish I could remember her name, she also wants to resign her seat, so that frees up two open seats, so the only person that's a carryover would be Anthony Hutchinson, but I have invited the members that want to resign to the, the meeting, which will be this Friday at the M R C with as many people as I can get to show up, there's some scheduling stuff, people won't be able to be there, but I'm gonna try to get as many people as I can on Friday to sit around, have a roundtable, see if they can kind of get a general feel for what they'd like to do. Uh, got a great response from M R C Craig, can't remember his last name. He's offered to let us use the M R C for all meetings going forward. Um, the nice lady at the hospital, whose name I also can't remember, she's extremely excited, um, she's like the community wellness and health. Um, Ron Howard is also gonna be trying to get someone to come, uh, forward as well. Uh, but, 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 so the one thing that I was talking with Martin that we hadn't quite figured out yet was when we do that clearinghouse of scheduling that we had talked about, we hadn't quite fleshed that all out completely, especially as far as who would be the person on the Rockport side, who would be the person on the Camden side to connect them to, to try to get that going in the right direction. Off the top of my head, I actually thought, um, on their end, it would be easy for either them to get Karen Brace or possibly Landon Fake to be their Camden person. And I was thinking, uh, Steve Beveridge would actually be, I think, a, a, and also a good, because in addition to being Public Works, he also lives in Camden, and he was a longtime ref and umpire for various sports thing, his son, his wife have been heavily involved in sports. They're long time people around here, and with Steve already being on the payroll, I didn't know the potential to say, uh, maybe Steve, eh, you're, you're doing ten hours a month, five hours a month dedicated just to recreation interface with Camden. It was just a thought thrown out there.
Well, doesn't Sue Dates do the scheduling now?
She has, I don't know, but that's, that's, you know, how Rick decides to, he's got employees, it's his purview.
One thing is we need to get our Rec Committee up and running, and then once that's done, then we can start to look at those things.
So the hope is by next month, you'll have a full committee, uh, with an alternate, with bylaws, and set dates.
Well, they've got to get appointed, you know.
Yeah.
All those members have to get appointed.
Right, and maybe the way to, to deal with the joint committee for the time being, at least to start it off, is to not push Camden into separating their parks and rec necessarily, to get our committee up and running, and then grab, you know, two people from each group and say, well, the joint committee is gonna be these, this smaller group with representatives from each one, and then work toward maybe in a few years.
Yeah.
Combining it into a Pathways type group.
And we were both pretty comfortable with the fact that we'd love to see it up and running, a fully functioning joint committee tomorrow, but we kind of understand the realities of it, so.
Well, the two towns, the way they handle recreation now are quite different, so I think it's gonna take a little time to merge it.
And considering our committee hasn't been functional for a few years, so getting ours up and running is the first step. That's, that's great, that if we can get those people all, all moving in the right direction, get, you know, the, um, the new people all committed and, and get moving.
Do we, uh, have any problem with the committee meeting in M R C where it is a town committee?
I, I know that part of what I needed to do was email Stacy to let her know our agenda, our location, our time, and let the people at M R C know that it isn't open to the public, if anyone comes looking for this meeting, they have to go. As far as it being in a private entity, I don't know the rules on that.
Well, it's not a, it's, it's a.
It needs to be accessible to the, to the public.
To the general public, yeah, and that, that space is a, you know, it's, it is a nonprofit that's open, people can come and go.
Um, he had offered, if we get into funkiness, we can do it wherever.
Does it have a room to put them in?
At M R C?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they've got, they've got little.
I think they have upstairs rooms.
Nooks and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And you'll be right in the heart of a recreation area.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it, it does.
They can take over one of those, what do you call them, waddleboard courts? Waddle paddle bar, what?
Tennis courts?
Yeah, the ones where.
It's a Tweedlebeetle puddle muddle fuddle, the bottle battle.
That new type of tennis that you play.
Oh, pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah.
Those are tennis courts, yeah.
They can take over one of those.
But that's, um, that's where I'm at, uh, apologies for not being, yeah, I know that I could have gotten it in a better place, but.
Good job.
It's been a long haul, so, it's, uh, but that's good, making progress, that's good.
I'm hoping that Harry, because Harry's, he's a really good kid, and I'm hoping that he brings a lot of energy to that.
Well, it's nice to have younger people volunteering too.
Good, okay, um, that pretty much takes care of our business as regular Select Board, um, we need to move in as wastewater commissioners.
Move to leave as Select Board and enter as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Move in second, all in favor? Uh, the first item we have, and my notes are different from what was written in here, um, because.
Mine are the same.
I guess they are the same, October and November.
Well, I will move to commit the October two thousand fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling ten thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents to the Treasurer for Collection.
Second.
Move in seconded. That's where I saw it.
This is the next one.
On this, on this letter that we have to sign, wastewater commissioners' vote required for December commitment, and it's moved to commit October wastewater.
That is, I'm sure it's.
But it, it is for October, so.
So what we sign will be October.
Yeah, what we're signing will be correct, okay.
Make a line through that one.
Yeah, well, it's the original, I'll let them do that. Okay, the motion has been made, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous, the next one?
Move to commit the November two thousand fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents to the Treasurer for Collection, as you get the same thing with that one.
Yep, second. Yep, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous. Remember, we will have to sign both of those before we part tonight.
Move to exodus.
Nope, nope, nope.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Set a date for our wastewater commissioners' budget review, and I'm suggesting May twenty-third, and I was just in the process of looking it up as which day of the week that is. That is a Monday.
Have we checked with, to make sure we'll have all the information from, when did we do it last year? Was it?
Right around then.
Okay.
Sometime in May.
Okay.
It was specifically requested to be after we finished the budget season for the regular town budget.
So we have to make sure that we get the information from, uh, Woodard and Curran.
Oh, Woodard and Curran.
That Woodard and Curran, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, also for Camden, from Camden, as to what their, Camden and Rockland for their treatment rates.
Yeah.
So. Um, so, uh, that's a Monday, I'm suggesting four P M in the afternoon.
The twenty-third.
The twenty-third of May, so.
This is wastewater.
Mm-hmm. Um, with that then, unless we have any other businesses wastewater commissioners?
I, uh, uh, we were not voting on that, we're just saying, yes. I, uh, noticed, I was reading the article about the Camden and Lincolnville Select Board's meeting, and they made a, Camden Select Board apparently made a comment that they were willing to take wastewater from Lincolnville should they decide to send any their way, that they had capacity for it, which was interesting, just an interesting aside.
Oh, I have a quick one on this note, um, the extension, we're trying to get it further down Route one, right? I happened across, uh, to sister-in-law's sister, she works at, um, Cedar Works, and I just said, hey, and this is the question, is am I wording this right to what you all are looking for? I said, hey, would you all be able to retain more employees? would you all be able to retain more employees or not lose employees or hire more people if you had sewer running by because that's what you needed to get the grant for fresh off the farm, right? So that's the way that I should be wording it, and if I run across more businesses, okay.
Will you be able to stay in business, will you be able to retain your employees? Can you expand your operations?
And the employees have to be, forget what it is, nearer below the median or something, in other words, they can't be two hundred thousand dollar employees. You know, they have to be sort of run-of-the-mill jobs. I can't remember.
Somewhere around the median of whatever the median grade is for the county.
Cedar Works wasn't gonna work, she didn't think that it was really gonna make, but I'm, I'm still trying to rack the brain in that strip and who would be good people to approach. I was thinking the bowling alley.
Yeah, they were gonna be at the northern end of the extension if we run it up from the south.
I'm telling you, league nights, that part is past.
I know, I've seen it. So, let's go to liaison reports.
I will move to exit as wastewater commissioners.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Show of hands, everybody, we're in agreement, let's go to liaison reports. Couple of reminders, uh, next month we will be hearing from the investment committee. Um, I've given them a list of five or six items to address. Um, they've resched, they had to reschedule their, uh, December meeting because they couldn't get a quorum. Uh, so they'll be meeting later this month. The library committee is also gonna come and make a presentation on the capital campaign committee that they are forming. Um, they've got a couple of issues in regards to that, as to how to do it, since the library committee is a public committee. How do they create a committee that can hold closed-door meetings? So, it may not be, and something from the library committee, but they will tell us how it's progressing.
A quick question about the library committee's meetings right now, they've been scheduled every Wednesday at ten.
The ad hoc, eleven.
Like eleven o'clock? In this room, do we, have we?
They're at the, they're meeting at the town office in the Richardson room.
Oh, because I thought I saw somewhere that, that they wanted to stream those.
We did, but we haven't been able to make that arrangement for the first several meetings.
But we did talk about that.
Arrangements on, on this end or on their end?
This end.
This end?
Our end.
We can do it.
Okay, so, somewhere along the line, it didn't happen, you know, the technician. We were looking at how to get.
Nobody asked. So, yeah, just, just tell us what you want. And we can make it happen. Or we could at least try to, but it's not hard to make it happen without knowing that you want it, you want it.
Okay, um, Rick, you attend those meetings.
Yeah, I do, and I, I mean, I wasn't here when they started setting up their first meeting, so I don't know what the reasoning was. But they, they opted for just using the Richardson room.
So, for instance, can we have it here this Wednesday? I mean, there's no, there's no scheduling conflict in this room, and I've, I've arranged to, uh, to train Terry on the equipment, so we have one other person. And haven't asked Brian if he's available, but, but, I mean, it's I, it's an important enough committee that we want to have as much of that online as possible. So, uh, willing to jump through some hoops to have it, to do it, and you can even just put a sign on the door.
Do you have an agenda yet for this week?
Uh, I know, but it's a regularly scheduled meeting, but, uh, let me reach out to, um, Jan. I can reach out to Jan right now.
How many people in that committee?
Eight.
So, the, the practice would be to have them up here, cause it's just easier to mic them. But you can fit eight.
You can fit eight people here?
Just, yeah.
Cozy.
Just two more than we normally have.
Okay, um, yeah, why don't you check on that? And, and let Jeff know. I also wanna remind you that you, you know, if we, if you have any particular guidance you think we'd like to give to the ad hoc library planning committee. You need to feed it to me so that I can put it together and so we can have it in, in hand before our next meeting. February eighth, so we can vote at that time, right?
Did you, you didn't send the spreadsheet yet, did you?
No, I didn't send a spreadsheet, I just sent the list.
I was, I was looking for it today, so, and you have the list that I gave you, but I'll send it again.
Yes, yeah, I was gonna, yeah, you were gonna send it to me again, I would appreciate that happening.
If you have two minutes after this meeting.
So, Owen, let's go to you.
Sure, uh, Parks is not meeting until March. Um, kinda gave you this, the rundown on the recreation already. Uh, pathways met, we had a gentleman from Lincolnville that came down and talked about Gateway One and what Camden and Lincolnville were doing on it. So they're working to get DOT to do some sort of multi-use pathway from the state park north. Uh, and they, uh, continuity between the towns. So, when I'm sitting there and they're talking about Camden, Lincolnville things, I try to think about, can Rockport help in any way? While not expending resources other than kinda like goodwill and saying, hey, we support you all. So, when they talked about continuity and, uh, the MDOT is kinda looking for continuity, I said, wha- what does that really look like? Is it wits, is it look and feel, but the problem is, is everything's kinda site-specific, if it's a scenic overlook, it's this one way, if it's. So, they're going through a lot of stuff, um, but the one thing that we as a board could possibly do if it is our will um, is, are we receptive to just lending our voice to Camden and Lincolnville in this effort? As far as a potential vote that says, uh, when it, when it gets into our part or we, we support the continuity and we just support this effort to make a more pedestrian-friendly, walkable, bikeable. Oh, and this is something, this is not to be set in stone or anything like that, this is conceptual on what we've been talking about for a long time, that strip from Camden down past the Hannaford. They spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to transition across parking lots and things. Farms is a good example, there's a strip there, how do you get through Leonard's? Um, the one spot that it did seem really kinda funky was coming out of Camden Street. That's the one that's got the dog park on it. Because it widens out so much, because it's a sharp turn. Uh, there was discussion, do, does the trail come and then actually follow down the road to a more safe spot and crossover? But we didn't think that that would actually be so safe, cause what if you're turning onto that road and all of a sudden you have to stop for that, or do you just have jut out, so, um, they're definitely working towards that. Uh, they're still trying to help Camden and, uh, Lincolnville with that whole rigmarole and.
There are, there are places where, and on high-speed roads in Europe where you actually have, and actually, I think in Chicago I saw it too. You have batons that are stored on one side and the other, and you grab it and it just lights up and you go like, and you walk with it.
In Chicago, they're using it to hit people with, trust me, I've been there.
For a while.
But again, the, the committee, I just, that joint committee, they really do, and Ken can speak to it too, they're just so well-functioning. Uh, they really try to look out for the other towns, so happy, happy to be liaison on there. Oh, and, um, I don't wanna overstep my bounds, but the Camden Parks and Recreation Committee meets right before us. So I always pass all those committee members not realizing what committee they were on, and the overstepping boundaries is hey, so why don't you guys all separate into Parks and Rec, like, that should be, that should be your thing, right, just separate them too, but, uh. But yeah.
Okay, that's it.
You can, uh, ORC is, uh, into their season, uh, talking a lot about the downtown district. Uh, making some minor changes to what was done last year to clarify and, and be compliant with DEP and things like that. Some talk about perhaps, right now we have sort of a sub-zone within the zone, uh, some talk about perhaps making it a separate zone. Uh, but I think what we're gonna do this year is just fix what we need to fix and then leave that for later on, perhaps, and I made the suggestion at the last meeting, perhaps once we meet the deadlines of March for the warrant articles and things like that, to have that committee keep meeting while it's all fresh in everybody's mind and, and get that done. We might need to as a board take a vote to task them with that, but, uh, uh, but I'll let you know on that.
What's a sub-zone within a zone, it's not spot zoning?
Well, no, what it is, is the downtown, uh, district, it was to improve development potential, and what we do is we separate out the parcels that are right along, uh, Central Street here, for example, the, the building height limit in the town is thirty-four feet. But there are buildings along here that are already higher than that. Um, and we also have vacant properties along this street, so the idea being that if somebody right before this sub-zone, if you wanna call it, that's not really the right term, but it gives you the idea. Before this was created, somebody would buy that property, they wouldn't be able to build a building as tall as the one next door.
I thought we changed that a couple of years ago.
We did, but what I'm saying is that there's, uh, there's some, it's more has to do with the presentation of the data in the charts within the ordinance which is a little confusing and, and the charts don't show it because it's, and the only way to make, show it in the charts would be to create another zone, but in any event. The, the committee is working on that and, uh, will, uh, probably have another, perhaps a, a second season after we get everything on the ballot, maybe get it done while it's everybody, fresh in everyone's mind.
Can I ask one other ORC question, which is, have they brought up at all the balcony stuff that we had?
Uh, it hasn't come up yet, but it, uh, I think it's, it's on the agenda a little bit later on. Ambulance review is meeting this week, I believe. I think I got an email, I think it's.
No, but I, I hadn't done the doodle, but I did the doodle tonight.
I think it's Wednesday evening.
Yes, it is, it's Wednesday.
So that committee will meet this week. Uh, Conservation Commission, uh, did not meet in December, the meeting was canceled because of lack of a quorum. Uh, they are meeting later this week as well. And I did get an email today from Bob Kennedy with a lot of budget information, and I've told him they have to have their budget numbers in, so Bob had, even though Bob is in Florida, he's participating just like he ever did, except he's not coming to the meetings. Um, so in any event, we got a lot of information from Bob on that. Uh, they're gonna be pushing ahead also with scheduling, uh, pesticide information sessions sometime in the March-April timeframe here at the Opera House for the general public to learn about what they can and can't use for pesticides.
As soon as you have a good date for that, let me know.
Yeah, well, that's one of the things they have to do this week, we were supposed to do it in December, but didn't, is to get that, that, uh, date set. And I think that's all, Cemetery, we're still waiting to hear on the, uh, columbarium information. So the Cemetery Committee has not met since the last time we spoke.
You can bring that up again tomorrow night.
Cemetery?
Columbarium.
Yeah, just make sure you say efficient way to stack people.
We already had the discussion on it.
Um, Library Committee met, uh, and as I indicated earlier, they've already created this capital campaign committee. Though there is some questions about confidentiality, uh, on people that they want to approach or people who make donations or pledges, but they don't want everybody else to know it until the last moment, uh, so, you know, they're working through that. Um, they may go to Friends of the Rockport Public Library or Legacy Rockport as being the sponsoring agency. Uh, but that's still up in the air. Uh, Stevie Cumbel is the Library Committee representative to the ad hoc, uh, planning committee. Uh, and they voted ten thousand dollars for stipends, uh, for the, uh, planning committee for the architect stipends. They're in the process of reviewing their collection policy. Um, they next meet on the twenty-fifth, that's a week later, usually they meet on the third two, the third Monday. But this month and next month it's holidays, so they'll be meeting a week later than normal. And they set their top priorities as getting in and establishing the temporary site, which they've done. Fundraising for the new library, and they also wanna do an annual appeal. The Friends of the Rockport Public Library, um, are working diligently with the library staff on create, on starting it or having a open house, which would also double as a thanks to all the volunteers. They wanna start it at two o'clock so Public Works can attend.
And do they have a date for this?
They have a date, um, and it is February twenty-sixth, the Friday. Um, from like, uh, two to four or two to five, something like that. I know there's a, the Jazz or, uh, Fire and Fireside Chat at five thirty.
Oh, for Christ's sake, that's that weekend, yep.
So, you know, the, people can come and go as they please and when they're, you know, so they can leave in time to get to the Opera House for, uh, Marlene Hall and the Fireside Chat. Though maybe that stuff has changed too, I don't know.
No, not as of this afternoon.
Oh, okay. And the Investment Committee meets, uh, next Tuesday at four o'clock and will report to us in February. And as I have said several times, Midco Solid Waste, the twentieth. Uh, be good to, um, be there if you're interested at all in what's gonna happen come post-March thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
I have a question. Does the Investment Committee have the, as through you, my kind of want and desire to have them explore the renewables?
That is on, that is on their, you, the, what do they call it, socially conscious investment, investing? That is on the agenda for what they will address to us that night when they come to us next month.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Which, which they addressed the last time they got.
Well, they, they, they've addressed it in the past, yeah, and the Library Committee has gone through it too and.
What's the squeaky wheel get, Jeff?
It's okay, it's okay, you'll hear.
No, 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 I, I, I agree with you, make, keep it squeaky, but it was interesting to split between the two, uh, uh, the two representatives. There was a woman and a man, and the man started off as like. He said, no, it actually works. If I remember correctly, I, I could have that all wrong.
They've all got men, they're all men on.
There was a woman, at one of the meetings, there was a woman from, this is not the committee, this is the, the representative from the bank.
Oh, Bar Harbor Trust, yes.
Harbor Trust, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Opera House Committee met this morning, bright and early, uh, mostly centered their efforts on budget. Adding Terry, uh, up to twenty hours, increased Randy by one hour to twenty-one, you'll see it in the budget. Um, talked about heating, fuel will go down, so a lot of, um, uh, a lot of shifting numbers in the budget. Uh, and the committee approved the, uh, the budget request that'll come to Rick. We talked a lot about, uh, the wheelchair lift versus, uh, which is a very old, uh, lift that only like two people in the United States can service because the German company got pissed off with the American distributors, blah, blah, blah. So it turns out that, uh, one of the possibilities that we'll look in the long run is a slo- a small capital expense. And to take that out, hopefully sell it back to them for parts. And actually put just like a stair, there's a difference between a, what's called a wheelchair lift versus a chairlift. A chairlift has an integrated chair, you get out of your wheelchair, you sit in the chair, that seems to be the, the practically the full extent of what we need it for, and, and it's a much smaller footprint, much cheaper, we could get a brand-new one, blah, blah, blah. So that is coming in the next couple of years. Then they talked about, uh, lighting, um, there's some fixtures there which people don't like. And so they looked at globes, they looked, so they will have a recommendation next, uh, month on what the committee feels we ought to do with exterior lighting on the, uh, building, on the building. Um, we're arranging a, um, a meeting with a gentleman by the name of Tom Sadowski and also Gary Price, uh, Gary, uh, Massey. Out of Portland, Tom is up in Union, I think, both lighting guys to advise to do a little field trip to upstairs and say, this is what we have, this is what the future is, this is what you could do.
Inside lighting, you mean?
The stage lighting, yeah, yeah, stage lighting. And, uh, they're on the cusp of, uh, signing, uh, uh, agreeing on their new, on the, um, uh, bylaws.
Okay.
That's it, from me.
Okay. Um, I did have one question, going back to Conservation Commission. Usually they come in and present to us at some point?
Yeah, I've gotta have, ask them when they wanna do that.
Yeah, um, now, you know, if they come in and, and do that presentation on the pesticides that may really do double duty?
Well, that's gonna be more of a public event. So I still, I think it's still good to have them come before the board at some point over the next few months. Um, so I still, I think it's still good to have them come before the board at some point over the next few months.
Are they talking, we, I brought this up before, are they talking at all about doing what Camden did with that thing in the town office? Where they encourage.
Pretty pictures.
Homeowners to use non-pesticidal.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the idea behind the seminar is to have, you know, get information out, because most people would like to do that, but they just don't know.
We don't wanna encourage dimming out your neighbors for.
So it's just a matter of letting people know and and they're gonna try to get actually people like from Home Depot and Lowe's who sell the stuff to come and tell them. Cause that's the problem. The problem is not the commercial applicators, they know how to do it. The problem is, is Joe Blow who goes down to buy Roundup to kill poison ivy. And uses five times more than they should, and then it leaks into the water and stuff like that.
The American way, some is good, others better.
So that's, that's gonna be an information session so that, uh, homeowners can go and and find out information about. How to, uh, apply pesticide or how, what strategies they have to eliminate. You know, whether it's plugs on their plants or weeds or whatever it is.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have anything else to discuss tonight? And I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move in second. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
This has to be a record.
Yeah.
You need another one of these. You need another of those.